Welcome to our first, the first time of our government class. We're doing a forum for an election. And so today, I'm happy to introduce Cody Rayner and Tom Hebert. And also our cameraman, Jackson Hanchu and Garrett Helmer, who are working on this particular project. Cody and Tom did a good portion of the work on setting together the questions and setting this up socially. Please, as they get it on, and I'll let them introduce the rest of this project. And go from there. Cody, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome. So basically, what we can do with this is the purpose is that I have more about you guys. I think that your position for the board of education. And we also want to get over to the other idea of who they're going to be. Tonight's guests, we have Douglas, Heather, Jason, Lewis, Sarah Lee, Scott. And we are listening to guests, one is Jesse Hubert. One is Jesse Hubert, but there will be representatives in the event. I imagine he's white. Sorry. All right. So first, we'll ask each other a question. We'll break it and then you can answer your question. And then we ask the guys to sit away and listen to me. And as we start, the camera person, yes? Okay. All right. First question for you guys. Why do you want to be on the Board of Education?
I want to be on the Board of Education on the fact that I have children within the school system. I have two young daughters that are in elementary. That I'm interested in their education and their development and in what they receive. Also, I'm an educator myself, so looking at back and knowing what I know about education, being able to use that knowledge and apply it to what I want to do.
Next, it's Heather.
Well, first of all, I just want to tell you guys, thank you for putting this on. I think this is a really cool project that you have going. But I want to be on the Board of Education. I've been an educator for the last 12 years in the public education system. During that time, I have served in a lot of different capacities, including building leadership teams, sponsoring, coaching. But outside of the school system, I've also been able to participate in lots of community supports, such as serving as an ally with Circles Community, working with Care Portal, serving as a foster parent, volunteering on sports teams. And through these experiences, I learned that the importance of meeting people, I've learned the importance of meeting people where they are and valuing all ideas and opinions. Being involved in these activities has given me multiple opportunities to connect with a variety of people from all walks of life and to better understand where people are coming from. I found a passion for advocating for those that are not able to advocate for themselves. And my hope is that serving on this board will continue to provide opportunities for me to advocate for our children, our staff, and our community.
One name for Jason again. I want to be on the Board of Education because I have three young children. And with everything going on and just the tremendous impact that the school district has on our kids, community, and the environment of our country, I think it's important that I spend this time to add impact on younger youth, including my children and my neighbors' children or community's children.
Now we have Lewis.
Now we have Lewis. My name is Lewis Simmons. I moved to this area back in 2016 with three of my children in my life. Two of my children, my youngest, are actually being homeschooled currently by me. I have one child that's in high school. With my background, being an outsider, I've had several opportunities to also going up in public school, the Department of Defense. I had my family was in the military. I was also in the military. I have different traits that I have in my background as far as heavy machinery, heavy diesels, marine diesels. I also had the opportunity to teach the Navy on to operate that machinery. So the different levels of education to me is very important, whether you're a child or an adult. With the seducation and being the outsider, it will work in your favor to make sure the students' achievements are a priority for your children. So thank you for the opportunity.
Now we have Sarah.
I'm Sarah Wickert, and my family and I have lived here for over 20 years. I want to run for the school board because my kids have been in this district for 13 years. And it feels like a good way to come back to my community and to serve. And I'm just excited for the school that we have. And I'm thankful, and I would like to see the great place continue.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm Scott Leonard. My answer is relatively simple. It's just a good opportunity for me and my family to serve the community that we're part of, a product of the school system and the community. And just want to see this place be successful for many years to come.
All right. I'm speaking for Jesse Hubert. And this was his answer exactly. I would like to have an active role in the quality of education my child has offered, reaching beyond that of the expected parent responsibilities. I believe our children should be provided the highest quality of education by the most qualified educators in the safest educational environment possible within our public, within our budget restraints.
Okay. You able to hear me? Okay, everybody? So I just want to say, yeah, it's overcoming. The second question for you guys, we're going to be starting the pedagogy thing. So what particular skills or experiences do you have that will make you an effective school board member?
Well, I have to apologize. I realized I actually meant my answer for this question the last time. So if you don't mind, I'll give you the answer for the first question to start with. My reason for wanting to be on the board is because I'm passionate about education. I want to be involved in my children's education in a way that not only impacts them, but impacts the community as well. Not only have I been a professional educator, as I said, for over a decade, but I've spent many hours serving in a variety of roles in the district as a coach, volunteer, a service provider. And I think that serving on this board will allow me to continue adding to that skillset in my toolbox as I continue working with my community and advocating for quality education. Like I said before, I have learned how important it is to meet people where they are and value everybody's opinions and their ideas. And I just have a real passion for advocating for people who can't advocate for themselves. And I really think that this opportunity will continue to allow me to do that.
What particular skills or experiences, including I'm a business owner and operator, and obviously, the school also has to work within a certain restriction of terms of budgets. I've served in various capacities and boards in the community. I'm well-educated, but surrounded by the common sense. And I think common sense is more important than anything this day and age. And then I also work and make decisions in team-oriented environments. Everything that we do in our business and some of the community projects that I've worked with is totally geared around team-oriented decision-making. And being a member of the multi-positive board, I think that's important. And then most importantly, I'm a lifelong learner. I think being open-minded, open to new ideas and different ideas, different from my own, is very important. Thank you.
What particular skills or experiences do I have? Again, I come from a different levels of education, plus higher learning. And within that education, that you're teaching certain individuals, you also have standards as well as far as your knowledge of the education you're teaching them. And I think that's important. When we look at our educators, we hope that that's what they provide for our students when they're teaching them and that they're teaching them right. I feel confident that with these particular skills and the experiences that I have, I would assist the school board in meeting the district's goals and your goals. Maintaining the facilities above standard, making student certification a priority, making sure the school district has all resources necessary to serve its students, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Part of my career was in business management, which taught me a great deal about working with people. And I think that will serve me well. I'm also a really good question-asker. Before I make decisions, I like to ask a lot of questions that come from every angle, just to look at things and turn it over and give the answers before we actually just make a quick decision. That serves me well. I've spent lots of years on church boards and community boards. And so I know how meetings go and how things should be run. I've also had students in this school system for 13 years. And so I've done a lot of observing. I've done a lot of learning along the way and would love to serve in those capacities.
My experience background is primarily finance. I've been banking for the last 15 years, so very familiar with budgets and cash flows, financial statements. Also, you know, I've got probably better understanding of the education process because I come from a whole host of educators, of which I'm the black sheep in the family. My folks have 60-plus years' education experience, among the two of whom in this community. And I feel like, you know, growing up in that environment and having that experience drawn would be a very good qualification for being a board member.
Once again, speaking for Jesse Hubert. He says this, "My professional skillsets focus mostly around public safety. Being in law enforcement since 1992, I've seen so many changes in society. Sadly, they aren't all positive. It is no secret that a police officer's line works a bit different than those we serve. I would bring to the table a line that can offer safety considerations for students and staff based upon its training and experience."
Some of the skills that I would have as far as for the Board of Education is I'm an educator myself. I obtained a degree through social studies, but then also went on to obtain a degree in special education administration. So knowing the ins and outs of what the school does and how it functions and being aware of what teachers can go through and also students can go through can give you that personal experience on that. Also, I have worked with youth that have been challenged as far as for the special education side, so behaviors, and also working with foster care children myself. I think that some of my experiences also in my life. I started education later on in my life, so I did know about the, you know, what students can obtain through, I worked in a factory for 10 years. And then I ended up getting my education later on. So it's just being able to know for myself and also knowing what we want for our students, how they can grow, how they can obtain things, how they can develop. And knowing and looking always for what's best for them, I feel like I have an advantage on that. Thank you.
All right. Do you have any questions? All right. Question number three, Jason. All right. Question number three is, what do you think is the greatest challenge facing this school district?
Currently, I think it's COVID. And I feel like that's an easy answer. But beyond that, keeping enrollment up, budgeting. There's a lot of big budget items coming up that was recently brought to my attention. And just how the school is an integral part of the small rural community. I think there's just many faucets of the community that impact the school and school and backside in turn. And I just think more collaboration and stuff like that could be done. And then lastly, the road would be useful. Thank you.
What do I think is the greatest challenge facing the school district? Obviously, there's a certain things that's going on right now with our government. As far as how they are, how they take in things as far as the brain in our education system, how they're slowly tearing things apart within that, it's the most hard. It's where our kids go to school. We are looking at teachers that hopefully teach them in the right direction. For when they do grow up and into to the atmosphere that we're looking at getting into with government and things like that and moving on as far as becoming lawyers and teachers themselves. It's important that we're teaching them the right way as far as their education. Finances, of course, there are big, big ideas coming up. Some of those items were discussed the last forum meeting. And this one that they're looking at right now is possibly the gym. That just doesn't just happen with the board meeting. That happens with you guys, parents and those in the community. So it's a bigger aspect. So what I think is that is the like, is the parents and the students themselves getting involved. Taking this for instance, we have a lot of students that are looking to do good things in government. And moving forward with that, that's what we need to start is with our children. So being that said, I think the children's education is where this needs to be improved as far as within our school district. I agree.
I think one of the biggest things in a small town in rural America is inconsistent enrollment. Some years you have a really big class, other years you have small classes. I know specifically in the elementary school, that kind of transitions into a basket upset to try to move teachers around to cover classes. There are several classes in our elementary that are quite large. I think that's a challenge for those teachers to have a touch on every student, to know where they're at. Early education in our students' lives is very important. So I think that's a challenge that needs to be looked at. I do believe, as I look around our school, both upper and lower, that we have some teachers who are probably going to be exiting soon. There's retirement on the horizon. And I think the biggest challenge there is finding people that want to invest in Hillsborough, not only in our students, but in our community. And really want to, I think our challenge will be to attract quality educators that want to stay and be here for the long term. Because that's, that's who we're looking at losing in these next several years.
I think one of the biggest challenges or issues that I may see on the horizon for our district is maybe concerns over the budget. I know a lot of the budgets and gas flows that I work with, the businesses, they're my customers. Expenses exceed what they have been historically. Materials, labor, fuel, they're all higher than where they were 12, 15 months ago. What does that look like for our budget going forward? What does that look like for a bond issue? How does that impact our ability to do things we need to do? So that would be my basis, sir.
Jesse Hubert's answer, "I think the greatest challenge is getting the most out of every dollar spent within the educational system. I do not believe that tossing money at issues makes them disappear. But I do believe that the smart use of funds will create positive outcomes."
I appreciate all that you said because there's truth in all of that. My thing that I look at as one of the greatest challenges is, you know, we're, we're a two-day school right now, and we're on the verge of being a three-day school. So we're just on that verge. And obviously, that messes with funding. That also gives a bit of difference in what we can, can't do within our school district. So attracting people to Hillsborough, attracting, you know, business leaders into our community, I think is one of the things that we can work with throughout the community to bring in people, to bring in families that can bring in those students. Hillsborough used to be a lot larger in a lot of ways, but then it's shrunk down into where it is now. And so making sure that we can have quality educators that, you know, as I stated, they do have some that are on the verge of being, you know, retired. We had a lot of retirees last year. And I know personally through education that COVID has messed with a lot of people as far as their ideas and what they want in the future. So making sure our teachers feel safe, making sure our students feel safe. But I think as we move on, it's facing those challenges, you know, as, as we invite people and we can, they can help with our budget. But that would be issues to save. And so my thing would be is that, you know, as far as personally, one of the things I would always try and make sure is that we are reaching out through whatever forms, through whatever degrees to bring in these educators that can help, that can help us to grow. That can, you know, also help us to teach our children and teach them well. Thank you.
I want to echo what several people have said. I think that the budget is, budget conversations are very important to the quality of our education and what we can offer as a district. I do think that as an educator, my perspective has been a little bit different just kind of being in the middle of everything in the last year. One thing that I have noticed in education overall, but even specifically in our district, a big challenge is that this world is just so dynamically different. It's changed a lot over the last decade, specifically in the last year and a half. Technology has changed the way that we do everything. I mean, schools in particular, it's changed the way we access our curriculum. It's changed the way that students are working, what the curriculum is teaching. But it also changes how our students are relating to each other. And I think that that's a really important piece to keep in mind when we're talking about the health and wealth of our district and where we're going. Students are more connected now than they ever been. We use our technology to enhance our learning. But it can also be a really big obstacle when we look at the whole child and we're looking at best practices and how we're connecting with our kids. I just, I think that it's really important that whatever decisions we make and whichever direction we go in our district, that we're always remembering those students and looking at it through a lens of how we can best connect with them and provide for not only those educational needs, but target those social emotional needs as well.
Question number four is, how do you plan to handle politically charged topics such as mask mandate in an unbiased way, and use both sides?
I think at this point, we saw this at the very end of the last year's school year when, when things started changing and started coming back around. We, we look at this and we have to think of individual's agency, where each individual has the right to choose what they, they're doing, especially with the parents when it comes to their students and their children. And in an unbiased way, it's, we have to be neutral. Because there's going to be a lot of discrepancies in individuals who, who see a difference in what other people should be doing. And I feel that on the school board, we have to be as unbiased as we can and leave it up to the parents to decide, decide the children's health. Make sure that the parents are deciding what education is being taught in our schools. It's a parent's decision on whether the child should or shouldn't have to wear a mask or be vaccinated. It's a very important issue, and it's really tearing this country apart right now. And in a small community like this, you could see that it allows people to stand together as a whole and look at the overall aspects of where it comes from our children. That's what's important. And seeing that the children, seeing us work together as individuals, it makes them work together as students and class. So that's where I stand on that issue. Thank you.
I don't believe as a board member that my personal decision for myself or my family can apply to a whole school district. I think the board needs to look at how policies play out for students and staff and those that are in the school building. I believe that you look at research that's being done or you look at what's being relevant for those specific organizations. And I think that my personal viewpoints are applied to my family. But there's no way that those can apply to an entire district of people that we're trying to educate and also move into a healthy way.
I think the key to handling a sensitive issue like COVID or really any sensitive issue like that is, is listening, listening to parents, listening to teachers, listening to the people we put in place that we consider to be experts. And once we gather all that information, you know, then we can go forward with decisions. But I think, again, the key in its simplest form, we need to start with listening.
Speaking for Jesse Hubert again. I'm sure that everybody answering this question has already dealt with or is currently dealing with this topic, be it within their close or extended family or at work or social circles. The ability to separate one's personal belief structure in relation to topics that are personal is a tall task to ask of anyone. I will always listen to the information available. I will ask questions of experts and not just swallow what I'm told without fully understanding it. In the end, I will attempt to make my decisions based upon knowledge over emotion or personal beliefs.
Whenever a decision is made, it obviously is not going to win to everybody. There's always going to be discretion throughout anything that we do. And people are always going to question things. My thoughts when it deals with things of sensitive issue or politically charged topics is always look for, think about it and then look for the proper channels. Listening to people, moving on, and also addressing things, looking at the data that we have. But if we look in communities like, for example, I'm currently in Wichita, and we have a mask mandate. Do I know it now? I didn't know it one minute, but it's something that Wichita is going to enforce. Then when we look at these smaller communities, a lot of them don't have the same issues that a bigger community has. So I think it's always important to make sure that we can keep it localized, that we can keep those decisions based upon what we have. that we can keep those decisions based upon what we have here and not what someone else is doing in a given community. Whether that be to start the year out, give choices to people or start it out and just leave it open to whatever is going on. We always are, I think it's always best to look at what we have here, what's going on within our school, talking to people, talking to the parents, talking to the teachers and talking to students also. They have voices in the matter since they're the ones that are affected too. And then going, moving forward from that. As a board member, I would invite people to come to the board meeting and talk to us on their concerns and not just, you know, stand on the sidelines and actually talk to us and address those things. That way we can get a good caption of what the community really is. Thank you.
I'm gonna echo several of the other candidates and say that being available to listen and to really hear what people are saying, understanding where they're coming from is part of the job of being a board member. I think it is. I think it's just about most important that people feel valued and that when they become to a board member, they feel like they're being heard. It's not my job to make a personal decision. It's my job to work with the group, to look at the evidence that we have, to look at all of the information coming in and to make the best decision that we can for the whole community, for our schools and our students. It is the students ultimately and the teachers who end up having to put this in place. So I think it's just very important that everybody feels like they have the opportunity to share, but also recognizing that the board is doing the best job that they can with the information and the decision making.
Unbiased is a real loose term. A good scientist knows that to remove bias from any sort of scientific question is a real challenge. I just think that open minded, open mindedness and having the ability to learn and accept new ideas and listening, as Scott said, are real good ways of making really tough decisions. When it comes to, you know, right now to it, a lot of decisions in terms of health and everything, I really believe is the parent's choice. And that's a reflection on individual children's needs. All the teachers know that those two jobs are the same in class. They employ different teaching tactics and do different things to more distracted kids and less distracted kids and how they place them around and all those challenges. And I just think when a decision like this may be a vote again as a public representative, I think it'd be very important to listen to our constituents in this matter as well as the science and each other's ideas on the board. Thank you.
Question number five will start with this series. How do you believe we should be able to upset parents and staff members?
I think being a good listener is always a good idea. I think I'm an approachable person. I think if someone is upset, if they're able to articulate their ideas or their problem in a calm manner, I think we should all be willing to have a good conversation. If people are wanting to air grievances, to be angry and to prove a point, I'm not sure that that's a constructive way to have conversations and to promote problem solving, but I do find myself approachable and I'm a good listener. So if you wanna have a good conversation, I'm available for that.
Sarah's fault my answer. No, I think being approachable is key. I think to harbor a environment where you can be constantly improving, you have to be approachable. You have to develop an understanding that people can come talk to you without recourse with the information they provide to you being perhaps confidential and that you will do something then with that information. You know, nobody wants to get chewed out or yelled at by a parent or staff member, but they might have a very valid issue, a very valid concern that needs to address. So just harboring that environment where people can come voice issues to you, I think is key. Thank you.
Jesse Huber's answer. Over the years, dealing with upset people has become second nature to me. I have found that active listening is the most vital tool anyone can have when it comes to dealing with someone experiencing heightened emotions. It's important to understand the reason why a person is upset prior to offering solutions. I will listen, try to understand and offer means to resolution within my options available.
I agree with the listening part. I also agree that I think that having like, trying to develop an open door policy within the board, letting your, let people know that you're approachable, but also taking the time to maybe visit the school and talk to people to alleviate. Sometimes if we can get the staff members before a problem, then it can alleviate any people getting outraged or really upset or getting about thousand, month, or nine. Also with parents and being out there doing things, we use things in school or to be able to be known or within the community, I think is also important. So people know us better and it's also provable and not just that we're hiding in a room during a second Tuesday of the month, but that we're actually, we're Monday. But that we're actually out there in the community, developing that trust, developing those relationships to where it could be possible even beforehand to alleviate some of this and to keep people from feeling that they're so frustrated they have to blow up to us rather than just come and talk to us and ask us questions. Thank you.
As I said before, I really believe that it's important for everyone to feel heard, for their opinions to be valued and their ideas to be considered. Taking the time to meet patrons or staff members in a setting that's comfortable to them and inviting can allow for clear, effective communication. And that's really important to get people feel safe and feel like they can really share. I want people to feel comfortable sharing their concerns and I would like them to know that their ideas are being clearly communicated and clearly represented to the rest of the board.
First off, I think any person in a decision-making role ought to have big shoulders. You gotta hear out a lot of people's emotional things and just simply hearing them out without your own introduction to your own emotions is important and much like everybody else has said, is listening and being approachable. Tough decisions sometimes gets real harsh responses and that's just part of the job it seems like to me. And as a potential board member, I feel like I'm up to the challenge. Thank you.
Like what everybody says, I believe the school board is there to be, should be approachable. We're all human. A lot of us are parents. We've all been in this situation where we have been angry enough to be standing in front of somebody and screaming at them. I'm one of those individuals as well. But what I've learned over time is you have to listen. You have to be professional enough to take, stand and listen and figure out what's going on. Everybody's whole life is different. Every child's different. You don't know the circumstances. But one of the things is to be professional at all times. School board has a lot on their shoulders because they're dealing with their children. It's their responsibility to look after their children and what they're being educated and taking on that role requires a lot of discipline. So with that being said, it takes a lot to stand in front of somebody when they're screaming at you. But the open door policy is something I also believe in as well. Being in different industries, you have to have an open door policy. You have to be able to sit down and listen to individuals, but you also have to be able to do the research. That's where I stand on that. Thank you.
So what do you like the most about the USC 410 school district? And would you like to change? If so, what kind of proposals do you have?
Sure. People. We have, I guess, I'm included in that because I'm from here, so I'm kinda giving myself a paddle back. We have some of the best people around. We have the best educators. We have the best administration. We have some of the best folks teaching our kids that money can't buy. And that's something that I would never want to see changed. What was the second part of the question there?
Would you like to see a change in this district?
You know, it's hard to say without really knowing some of the information that the administrators have and where we need to improve. I'm sure there are areas, but I think that's something that, you know, once the new board is installed, that's something we'll need to take a look at. I think, you know, striving for excellence on everything we do is important. And we've been excellent in a lot of things for a lot of years, but that doesn't mean we can't be excellent in other areas as well. Thank you.
From Jesse Huber. On a professional level, I've always enjoyed working with the administration and educational staff at USC 410. I see a desire to bring the best out of everyone involved within our school system and I would like to build upon that.
I wanna add to what I've said as far as the schools, the people there, the teachers. I've been able to have my daughters go through those education system and just the wonderful teachers that work very hard to make sure and ensure that they're safe and also receiving a good quality education. When we had last year with the COVID issues, we had, they ended up making tough decisions to keep my daughter at home and had no time to see education level to any degree less than what they were getting at school because of the computer and, you know, the teachers there. I think that's a wonderful example and says a lot for a district to have people that care that much and are willing to go to that extent to make sure our children are taught. When I see about change, just, I think it would just be continual growth through making sure that our educators have what's needed to be able to teach our children, whether it be something that is, with a newer technology or also thinking about to make sure that they always have those tools and things that they need. We talked about, it was said about class sizes being a bit large, you know? Maybe it's something we can look at about, you know, if it's always possible to bring in other educators to be able to alleviate that load a little bit. But those are always things, you know, not being a board member right now, but just looking into the future, those are things that, you know, those are things we would discuss and those are things that we would talk over and make an educated decision when we do it. Thank you.
Having grown up in this community and having attended the USC 410 schools, I have always been very proud of how close knit this school community is and the rest of the community. The school puts a high level of value on positive community relationships and student learning. Our district doesn't just work to meet standards, but they do everything that they can to exceed those standards. I've always been impressed with how this district keeps up with current best practices, that are evidence-based and the challenge our staff and students to be critical thinkers. If I were going to think one thing that I would like to see this district do, it would be that we would continue that trend of being open to new innovative ideas that would continue to move us into a 24 century. When looking at new programs, I would like to see the district take into account all areas of education and every population of students that we serve, from general ed to the special ed or the special populations such as English language learners or special ed services. I do feel that it's important that we not only provide those current evidence-based practices to our learners as a whole, but that we continue maintaining that high level of rigor for those students who might require some additional support by providing them with the same current best practices we need to their individual needs.
What I like the most about the USC 410 school district is their passion and their respectful leadership. From my experience, they've been very committed and common sense, tremendous work ethic. Also the excellent staff in terms of maintenance and teachers that I've met, interacting with from outside looking in. There's a tremendous amount of experience with years and years without turnover, which is really a testament to the leaders and also the school district itself. And then probably most importantly is successful graduates. I've been around a number of recent graduates and I've gotten to know since I've been in the community, past graduates and talked to a bunch of people and they're tremendously successful. That's a testament to the school district. As far as anything that I would like to see changed, I would like to see more vocational opportunities for college alternate programs for young people from Hillsborough. I've had kids out working for me that didn't know the difference between a vaulk being hammer and a vaulk hammer. And something as simple as that is very important as I know I've never met a man that had a, oh, a perfectly good type of vaulk for a while. So use an appropriate tool and have an opportunity for these young people to learn those things would be really happy to thank you. Thank you.
We're the only individual that's, you know, one of the stories, I'll start over. One of the things that, one of the things me and my wife, first thing we looked at when we moved here was the schools. And that stood out beyond anything else. The one thing my wife said, they have excellent schools. And ever since we've been here, we have seen that. We've experienced the teachers, we've experienced the administration and it's all been professional to the highest standard. That's what I like about the school. I talk to my son on a daily basis, my oldest son was in high school, and he's never once said a negative thing about his teachers or the administration. They're always looking out for their best interest. That's what I like to see in the educators that are teaching my children. As for changes, it's hard to say. If you guys are in that role as a board member, you never know what's going on. But what I do like to see is more activities at the meetings from students themselves and as for the parents, I might have to say, I was the only one person at the meeting last time, one person, only parent. That needs to change. If we're gonna stay here and make change with individuals in our school district, parents need to really put forth the effort and point and see what our school board is dealing with. As far as proposals, again, it's hard to say. Do you actually in that role? But I'm also agreeing that, sorry, change. As far as more vocational schools, I come from those trades. A lot of students probably don't see college. I started out in trade and went into the military. Some students do that. But there's a lot of trades right now are lacking that make great deal of money to provide to their families when they do have families. And that should be taught here. We have that ability as far as educating the needs further, especially when they get to high school. Why not have it at college level while they're in school? So that they learn that college level and getting their association degree within two years. Most trade schools are two years, and once they graduate, they go into the workforce. Trade schools are important, not just sending your child off to school. Some parents can't afford that. I think that's a great basis to start in the school district because we have those qualifications, not in teacher, but as parents. Thank you.
I echo what many of these friends have said about having excellent staff and administrators. Every time Bryce and I walk out of a parent-teacher conference, we just shake our heads because it's just fantastic. From Mr. Corby checking us in to the teachers that we sit and wait for, we walk away and we are astounded at how many teachers love what they do. They get excited about what they're teaching, and they love our kids, and they want to see them succeed. If somebody's having trouble, they want to figure out a way to help them. And I think that was our biggest asset, and that was my favorite thing about going to parent-teacher conferences, is just to observe these folks that love what they do. I would echo also that I'm not sure what to change because I'm not in this position yet. Essentially, I don't know what I don't know. So I'm willing to learn and we'll take it one day at a time.
Our next question was from Jesse. So how do you feel about the quality of these facilities, like choosing sports or ball for some of the grades such as like air conditioning and engineers?
Yes, I've spent some time within the structures that make up USC 410, and I think we have nice facilities. I feel that the dollar has been stretched to achieve the best bang for the buck. I would support the idea of having a bond to add AC to the gym. I've had the pleasure of being in our gym many times this year, and I must say it likes comfort.
I think the facilities here have kept up very well, but like when I've gone through the elementary school, it always looks very nice, clean, and taken care of. I know currently the board has talked about, you know, replacing windows throughout the district. Basically, help with heating and cooling to keep the bills down on that, which I think is an excellent idea. When it comes to the bond issues, I think we should always be careful, especially when it involves our taxpayers, our base. I mean, our county has, well, our school district has less people in it than than some of the Wichita schools. And so it's always important to remember who we represent and what we have. And I think when it ever comes to the bond issue like the current one we have, it expires in 2028. So thinking about that for years and having another bond issue with that, it's always something that we shouldn't ever take lightly when we're dealing with patrons' money and making sure that we're making the right decisions. It, you know, sometimes, obviously being within the gym and everything and then not having any coolness can be, can be a harsh thing. But then just remembering who we represent, what we do, always taking a vote on it, making sure that we represent the right people and the right voices. Thank you.
I'm going to echo. I do think that the district has done the best job that they can with maintaining the facilities. They've always been clean and inviting, and as a former student, it's nice to be able to come in and see, even if, you know, this room wasn't updated recently, but it's still more updated than it was when I was a student here. So it's just nice to see that the district is continuing to maintain the facilities and doing the best job that they can with the resources that they have. But that being said, there's always things that could be improved upon. And I do think that it's important that we do everything that we can to maintain the facility so that our students are getting the best quality of education that they can get. But that we're also being very mindful of where that money is coming from and who we're representing when we do that. And that we are striving to make the most informed decision that we can and make the best decision and the best use of that money that we can.
From the outside looking in at the facilities, I have never walked through anything with a fine toothed comb, but it sure appears in decent shape, and I think that's a testament to the maintenance staff and the leadership and their programs. Undoubtedly, there's plenty of areas open for improvement. I have heard like this gentleman about the windows being an issue in terms of efficiency for the AC units and things. I think upgrades like that are important. Some of the facilities are outdated, the air is not functioning well. As far as the bond issue specifically, like this gentleman, any sort of tax increase of any kind is prohibitive. It really needs to be thought out very, very wisely and clearly because those same taxes, those same taxes affect businesses and other folks wanting to come in. And then also, just without being privy to the other pressing issues, I'm sure due to the lack of knowledge on cost, the prioritization is relatively more effective decision for broader impacts. I don't know where I'm at on that stage. Thank you.
When it comes to money, there's a lot more involved than just the school board, especially when it comes to bonds. Yes, the windows is one of the priorities that the school board is looking at right now. As far as, that's what was being stated at the last meeting. The facilities is important. They should be up yet because our children are there. There's a safety issue. One of the things that they spoke about was the air systems in the schools and how they function and what they're doing for our children. I mean, I grew up in a school system where it was not air conditioned, especially in the gym. But under the circumstances of what we're dealing with, yeah, it's needed. Because one of the things I hear from my son since he started at this school is that we're never going to put an air-conditioned community in the gym. And he still complains about it. But when it comes to a bond, it not just affects the school board, but it affects the people living in the community. You know, we see as a small community, we've come together to take care of a lot of things. Volunteers and stuff like that. But when you're dealing with a bigger issue, you have to deal with contractors. You have to deal with increased taxes. I would support the bond, but I also have to look at other people's lives and how it would affect them. Some people may not give up for tax increases because of their income and the jobs they have lost previously. So it's a big issue. Thank you.
I'm too. I know my people have great facilities. I think we've done well to maintain what's been here quite a long time. I think Stewart did that well. But moving into the future, I do think that there's always maintenance. There's always a way to steward well that also to look to grow and improve. But at this point, I'm not going to comment on bond issue. I've not been on the board. I haven't looked at their budget extensively and looked at what that would do to our community. So I was making the opportunity to do more learning before I make a decision on that.
You know, when we come to various games and events, we get to see the great parts of facilities. We don't necessarily always see the parts that are tired and need attention. AC in the gym, that would be amazing. Been many beaters sweat, roll off parents' brows in there, especially in the summertime. But you know, bond issue, what all that entails, obviously, that's something that we would need to weigh the pros and cons and make sure the juice is worth the squeeze. We have to be responsible with taxpayer dollars, and we also need to make sure that we're maintaining a budget that is reasonable. So I think that's something we'd have to get in the situation and just evaluate things once we're there. Thank you.
Next question is, do you have any areas that are concerned regarding student achievement in our district? And if you do, would you have any suggestions for improvement?
I think student achievement is something that should always be on our minds because I think that's what we're here for. That's what we're trying to do, is make sure we can get the best for our students and whatever capability that we can do. Looking at past test scores as far as on par with last year with a lot of the issues that teachers faced, it still stayed on par with what the state has as far as reading and math go. So I think considering what challenges they have, that's actually pretty excellent. And then thinking about how though we can take that and progress onward from that point, how we can make sure that students have what they need, the tools that they need to be able to be successful, to make sure that we're not leaving anything behind with any reading or math, any issues of that, that we're always making sure that we're constantly diligent with being a part of that. So I would say any suggestions for improvement would just be always, not being there, not knowing exactly at the moment, but just knowing how education goes. I think one of the things that we can always do with suggestions for improvement is maintain what we have and then building from there. Because, you know, we have great things going on, but making sure that it's in the right place and happening at the right moment. Thank you.
When I was doing some research and looking over the performance rates in our district, something that stood out to me was the effectiveness rate of our post-secondary progress. That just means how successful are our graduates once they get out of school at Hillsborough High School? How successful are they with going to some kind of a post-secondary education, whether that's trade school or college? Or maybe they're even going straight into the workforce? I was a little surprised at the difference in the effectiveness rate versus the graduation rate. We have a phenomenal program at Hillsborough High School, and we graduate a lot of students. But when we look at how well that that's preparing them for life after high school, I think that there are some things that we could maybe do a little bit better. Our success rate was, oh, sorry, I lost my notes here. Okay, there you go. I recognize that there could be a variety of variables that contribute to these numbers, but I do think that it's important that we look at all aspects of learning from preschool all the way through grade 12 and evaluate how our instruction and how our supports are aligning with these numbers. We should ask ourselves, you know, are we being intentional about providing rigorous education, identifying students' strengths and their weaknesses, and then working to support each student in those areas? Are there holes in our instruction at any level that could be improved upon to build our students' skill sets and better prepare them for life after high school? Whether that's vocational readiness or even just social emotional readiness. Graduating from high school and going into the world is a really big deal, and I think that we need to be intentional about looking at that. I would like to see our district be as transparent as possible when communicating with our community about the things that are going well, but also about some areas that could be improved upon. I would love to see more collaboration between community members and our students as a way to just provide some of those meaningful experiences, specifically within our businesses or our trades, that would just give the students some exposure and give them an opportunity to see what's out there and better prepare them for that life after college, help them work towards those goals that they have. Thank you.
From my personal experience, I think the school district's done an excellent job in terms of student achievement. As far as suggestions for improvement, I would just go back to, you know, the vocational aspect and just real-world common sense things. I think some of these young people aren't getting any very well read school. Thank you.
Regarding students' achievement, you know, one of the things that you look at a child is what is he going to do after school? And then to lacking in not knowing what is ahead for students after public education, we have to look at different factors. I believe the family environment, costly college specifically, a child's learning disability, and the poverty level. Critical thinking is very important, especially in a child. They should be able to learn something that they want to continue in their life. You know, my two younger children and what they do on an everyday basis. I got a daughter who loves animals. She could possibly be a veterinarian. I got a son, a younger son, who wants to go chase dinosaurs, to dig them up because he's always doing something in my yard. But I'm also in agreement with vocational. Again, there's so much education out there for our children. I think it's up to them to decide what they want to do when they get out of school. But also should be able to take part in that while they're in school to fulfill those obligations. Vocational skills is very important, the trades. They're well-paid. They're needed. Very badly. So when it comes to the child education, we need to continue knowing in our home, but also in our education system and schools, and allowing them and bringing those in and involving them. When we look at children, a lot of kids don't play sports. Some kids will go on to college and continue with sports. Some may just want to get out of high school and be done. But we also like to look at it all on a broad scale, and I think vocational skills and having them learned and having them get a small degree within the high school level, we have that aspect around us. We have several colleges in this area. We have vocational schools right here in this town that are starting. And I think if we apply those in our education system, I think not only will we achieve that and look at our children at a higher standard, but it gives them more of an opportunity to succeed, excuse me, to succeed. Thank you.
I have three students in the district currently, and they all are different learners, and they all have different abilities to learn. And we have been, as parents, pleased at the communication between the teachers and the parents to help them be as successful as they can be, no matter what level they're at. So I currently don't have any concerns. I would like us to see continuing to strive for excellence. I do believe, frankly, Mr. Corby, that our middle and high school scores went up last year, even in the midst of hyper learning. Like, that's pretty phenomenal, yeah, for me.
I'm currently not aware of any concerns on sports achievement. I can only, you know, I'm very satisfied with my two daughters that are in the elementary school and their achievement where they've been able to score tests, standardized measurements. But, you know, that doesn't mean that that's the case for all parents and all students. If there are issues out there, parents or staff or administrators think there's areas where we need to do better or we can do better, by all means, I think we need to look at those seriously and find ways to improve. But specifically, I wouldn't be able to speak to that. Thank you.
From Jesse Hebert. Basically, he says, at this point, based on the information available, he doesn't have any concerns. He feels like we are doing well.
Let's say you're going to have any questions regarding the sports, and what would you say is a suggestion?
Well, as a teacher, I may have a little bit of personal ethics about this, but I would say that if money were no issue, of course, I would always advocate for teachers being compensated adequately for the time and the effort that they put into their job. And that's not just the physical time. It's also the mental time, the emotional time that they put in. I think that they, they just put a lot into our kids, and I think that that's really important to recognize that and to do what we can to honor that. A close look into that would also be to provide them all the materials and supplies that they could ever possibly need to give a well-rounded education.
they could ever possibly need to give a well-rounded education without having to spend any of their personal money on buying any of those supplies. If you know a teacher or you've never been in education, you know that that, they care so much about our kids. If they don't care, it doesn't bother them to have to, you know, work over a little bit of money. But I think if there were no budgetary issues, that would, that would be really important and a really easy way to let them know that their time is valuable. For our students, I believe that it's important for them to view school as a very inviting place where they can feel safe to come to school and be themselves. And so, any resources that would support creating that positive learning environment and that would provide meaningful opportunities for them to build relationships with staff and their peers, I also think that that would be very important. Whether that's just improving the facilities so that they can continue attending, or whether that's providing a new curriculum, or even creating clubs or other activities that would provide all opportunities for all students to feel like they had a place that they could belong. Thank you.
I would, if budgetary restrictions are not an issue, I would just like to see the school have a better hand in real world readiness for these kids. I think every graduate coming out of high school should have a really good understanding of finance, money, and work ethic. In my own reflection of high school, coming through high school, they didn't teach me one thing about finance, the real world taught me that. And I think that's a jump start that we can give these kids. Something else could be, I'd like to see school-sponsored sporting opportunities at a younger age in these kids, and not so much relying on the rec for doing that. I think in doing that, these kids might learn technique a lot better and take things to be more serious. And that way, they'd be better in the high school area. Also, I'd like to see greater emphasis on the FFA and related activities. Thank you.
Having no budgetary restrictions, as far as, I think every high school district is like that. If we only look at all our government entities, we always see that the school districts are the last ones to receive any type of funding. They're the low man on the totem pole. It affects our, our children. Of course, if there was no, if there was a broad range of finances that we would have, I would look at, you know, pay increase absolutely for our teachers and our faculty. Faculty upgrades, obviously, there's, there's a lot to do for the facility to make it safe for our children. But also look at the educational programs. I agree with the fact that there should be other programs besides sports entities that we have for other children who wish to participate. Different clubs, different educational programs, learning programs. As far as trades, again, I'm very adamant about that. But it would be awesome to have that because there's a lot of different things that we could do for our schools, for our teachers and our faculty. Thank you.
This one has me a little stumped. First of all, I would give teachers a raise, no doubt. But my second one is for you students here. We're just going to put a giant Trojan Head on that chart bus.
Double teacher salaries. Figure that out by my new focus. But seriously, you know, as I've traveled through Kansas over the years, it seems like Hillsborough was developed kind of what it's known for. I hear people tell us that, you know, we're good, we're known for good basketball teams, which we think we're for. We're also known for sausage and all things. But, you know, I guess I would challenge us, if budget was not a restriction, I would challenge us to be known as the best school to work at and the best place to get an education for kids. And if we can accomplish that, you know, if budget wasn't an issue, I think we would be out of excuses on why we couldn't achieve that. Thank you.
All right, Jesse Hubert says, AC in the gym, smiley face. He would also like to see more direction in education towards specialized service fields such as heat and air, plumbing, carpentry, auto mechanics. As homeowners, I think we can all agree that these careers offer great income potential and are in demand. I believe every opportunity our school system can offer to better prepare our youth to succeed in the quote, "real world" is a giant step in the right direction. We would all like to have a six-figure office job. Reality is, the world doesn't completely function from behind a desk. Of course, that is my dream with no budget restrictions.
On no budget restrictions, I think, of course, teacher salary would be one of the main things, making sure that we can keep good educators here, make it enticing, make it so people want to be here. And as far as continuing to educate our youth, facilities, looking at the things we have, modernizing the things, you know, as was mentioned, like the AC in the gym, but just also making sure that our facilities are here, they're going to withstand and be here for a long time. And we need to add room to things to be able to do that. I also think not having any budget restrictions, it'd be important to, I think, would, you know, reach out to different colleges to bring in different trades. It's what's mentioned. I really like that idea. I, I personally work with students kind of out in the real world and trying to help them. So one of the things is trying to, if we have no budget restrictions, then we could bring in different colleges, bring in classes for kids to take, to get college credits where they can go out into the public right afterwards without any debt and any education and be able to get a job. As I've agreed already, expand upon that. Thank you.
Hey, we're going to go through this one final time. If you have any saving you'd like to thank for, for the interview, go ahead.
First off, I'd like to thank Connor and Brody. I think they're going to round a pot of applause for them. I think, I think you guys are a tremendous testament to Hillsborough schools and for you guys to have the courage and enthusiasm and that this is a testament to that. I appreciate the opportunity to answer these questions. I believe these kids and my own are truly the future. Proper education and development are imperative to their successes and our very own. That's why I would appreciate the opportunity to serve and I would do my very best to represent the constituents and do everything I could and benefit of you. Thank you.
In closing, I also like to appreciate the students, Mr. Darren Olson, for taking this time to bring this together. I'd like to thank the student body for preparing the questions and putting together Kansas Forum. I also would like to say that child education is very important. Education has changed dramatically from when I was in school, and I'm sure with most of you. But this education in this, in this city, in this town shows. Because not everyone here is fully of this, this Board of Education and the faculty within this, in this, this region. With, with that being said, I would continue to make the education the number one agenda moving forward. Thank you for your time.
I've had several people ask me why I want to run your school board. And I can honestly say I have zero agenda. I have zero agenda. I love USC 410. My family and I love living in Hillsborough, and it's a way for me to serve my community and to continue the excellence that we have here at the school.
And so my answers are, may have been some lighthearted comments. That's really just who I am. And, and that's what you get, I guess, if, if I get on board. I take this very seriously, but at the same time, if I'm elected, you will get 100% of me and the best I can do and everything that we're challenged with. Would love the opportunity to serve this district. I've got a lot of roots here. I have a lot of interest in making this place continue to be successful. And appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Jesse Hubert says, I have seen the list of candidates who have stepped up and offered their time and knowledge to be a part of the school board, and I feel all of these people would serve our community and youth well. My career has been one of public service, and I feel this is another opportunity to serve and be a part of what I hope are some of the greatest years of my child's life. All of us have skills that can make USC 410 potentially even better, and I will continue to serve in whatever capacity I can to reach that common goal. And a special thanks to whoever had to read my answers today. That would be me. So, thank you, Jesse.
Standing up here and being able to answer questions with all of these people is a great opportunity. I think that just hearing the, the commitment and the continued support of this rural education, I think is wonderful. And being part of that is, is a really honorable task that I would consider. I, I would give the best I can. I would also try to make sure that, you know, our board is known, that the community knows what's going on and try to make it a bit more transparent. I enjoy that because, you know, as a parent, I like to know things and sometimes I can't make it convenient. And so, it's, it's also important for me to be able to see that and understand and know what it's like. Thank you.
I too want to tell you guys, thank you for putting this on. I think the fact that as high schoolers, that you guys saw this as an area where you wanted to learn more and you were passionate about this topic is really cool thing. That's not something that a lot of high schoolers, a lot of students at your age do. And I know it wasn't something that I got to do when I was your age. So I just think it's really neat that you guys took the time to, to research this process and, and get to learn firsthand how it works. So thank you for that. Being an alumni of USC 410, having taught at the county, choosing the district to raise my kids in, I, I do have a vested interest in seeing this district be all that it can be. I've seen firsthand some of the struggles that the district has faced, but also things that the district has overcome. And I feel really good about it. I'm a person that likes to ask a lot of questions and to really understand processes and how things work. And I think that not only will being on the board provide me that opportunity to see education from a different perspective, but I also feel like I can bring a unique perspective to the table. And it would be my pleasure and privilege to serve this district in that capacity and to be able to continue advocating for our students, our staff, and our community. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I would like to thank you all for coming and giving your time and answering all the questions. And I also would thank the audience for being here in the same cycle to the candidates. Otherwise, that's it.
I do have one thing I want to say. First of all, thanks for the interview and Connor for putting this together. And for the guys who showed up over there and the cameramen. They did a great job with this. Also, I want to point out, some of you who were interested in being here, like Anderson, also gave suggestions for questions. There are play prizes tonight, so we're not even going to be a part of this, but also others interested as well. But I do appreciate, I certainly appreciate the work of these two gentlemen, especially for putting the final questions together, running the show. And I had no idea how long it was going to take or how much to do. And we were trying to keep it a night over hour, hour 26 minutes, but I think they did a great job. So we can give them a round of applause. Appreciate their interview time.